I call to order the meeting of the Portsmouth City Council today, Tuesday, July 8th. I want to acknowledge all of the citizens that are here participating in this exercise while we conduct the people's business. Also, I want to acknowledge those city staff members that are with us here today. In addition to that, I want to acknowledge our city manager, Mr. Stephen Carter, our city attorney, Ms. Lavonda Graham-Williams, and our city clerk, Ms. Deborah White. Also, I want to take a moment to acknowledge my colleagues on council and let them know that we appreciate their attendance tonight. We do have an invocation by Pastor Gregory Wiggins, Living Faith Church. Pastor Wiggins, if you would come forward. Thank you, sir. Let's all stand.
Let us pray. Father, we say thank you, and we thank you for all things. And we thank you for life, we thank you for liberty, we thank you for the ability to come together and discuss the matters of the city. And so, God, we pray that you would bless this city, that you would bless Portsmouth, God, in the name of Jesus. We pray for every council member, and we pray that you will pour out guidance, that you will pour out wisdom, and that you would be with them, Father. And even when we disagree, we pray that you would help us to speak the truth in love to one another. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge of allegiance with light of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Once again, thank you, Pastor Wiggins, and I would ask of my colleagues on council, please note their attendance electronically.
Seven members of city council are present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have the minutes of a called meeting on June 23rd, 2025, and a called meeting on June 24th, 2025, and a regular meeting on June 24th, 2025. Is there a motion?
Move to a second.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Would you please vote electronically?
The minutes are adopted, seven zero.
Madam Clerk, thank you. Would you please now read the speaker rules?
Ladies and gentlemen, city council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. The end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask you to conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the city council as a body rather than to any particular member of city council staff or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our first item on the agenda is public hearings. Item 25-195, the first item, item AUP-25-02. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the public hearing resolution we are considering tonight?
Yes, sir. Resolution granting the request of Coastal Virginia developers for a use permit for the development of five townhouse units on approximately .56 combined acres located at 430, 436, and 442 Douglas Avenue in the historic residential zoning district. The future land use map of the Bill 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for mixed use uses, mixed residential uses, excuse me. Planning Commission recommends approval with conditions. The actual resolution, a resolution granting a use permit, UP 2502, to Coastal Virginia developers to construct a total of five townhouse units on three parcels having addresses of 430, 436, and 442 Douglas Avenue.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is the applicant present? Sir, if you will come forward, state your name and address. You will have 10 minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, members of city council and staff. My name is Grady Palmer. My business address is 222 Central Park Avenue in the city of Virginia Beach. I'm with the law firm of Williams Mullen. I'm here tonight on behalf of Coastal Virginia Developers, who is proposing to construct five townhome units in the Port Norfolk Historic District. Now, it's important to note that this matter has been presented to the Historic Preservation Commission. There's a picture of the lot right now. It is subdivided into three different parcels. This has been reviewed extensively by the Historic Preservation Commission. They unanimously approved the proposal with specific attention to the architectural details to ensure that it is a craftsman-style townhome development. So, the site plan is in the package. It has parking in the rear, and the units are pushed up onto Douglas Avenue to help create a nice streetscape along Douglas Avenue. That's sort of a neo-traditional design technique that's been employed here. But the Historic Preservation Commission has reviewed it, has approved it. And really, there are a couple of different policies that really encourage this type of mixture of residential uses. You heard that it is in the mixed residential area on the future land use map, and that really encourages a mixture of uses, not all just suburban-style, single-family, like some parts of Portsmouth and Chesapeake and other cities are where it's just single-family all around. This really encourages a mixture of uses, to mix in townhouse-style development with apartments with single-family. That really creates the character, and has for many, many years, the character in the Port Norfolk Historic District. You see a mixture of apartments, single-family. There's another elevation of what we're proposing here. And we think this would be a great addition to Port Norfolk, to the historic district in particular, to allow some more. I don't know that any townhomes have been built in many, many years. All the ones that I'm aware of are done back in the 70s and 80s. So, the architecture is, I think, very appealing, sets a very high standard for any future townhouses that are proposed for Port Norfolk. And so, I think that's an important consideration. You also have several other policies, your strategic city-watt housing plan, and the neighborhood investment focus area. You know, all of these are encouraging the mixture of uses. And of particular interest to me, I went back and reviewed the Port Norfolk Historic District guidelines, and it does allow for multiple units in one particular building. It certainly has provisions for single-family development, but it also has provisions encouraging two-unit complexes, three-unit complexes, even up to five-unit complexes. So, this is built into the design guidelines and the city ordinance for this proposal into Port Norfolk Historic District. And I really want to contrast this with the more suburban-style development that you see even in close proximity to the site. To the left of that little site plan right there, there's a single-family neighborhood, all single-family homes. You know, Port Norfolk is definitely a mixture of units of residential style, including single-family but townhomes and multifamily apartments and neighborhood-scale retail. This is very typical of the era and what gives historic districts their character. So, the mixture is specifically permitted, as I said, in the historic district guidelines. That's an important consideration, that that was contemplated in the historic district. So, this would be for-sale ownership opportunity and really would be the missing middle. You know, we struggle with the missing middle all over Hampton Roads. We talk about the missing middle, and this would address, in a small scale, the availability of housing to the missing middle. And so, we think it's appropriate in its location and a historic character, but also serves the needs of the missing middle. So, I do ask for your approval. Just before I close, these would be for-sale units in the range of $300,000 to $340,000 and about 2,000 square feet. So, that's the proposal. We do ask for your approval, and I will stand by for questions. Thank you. And I do want to just introduce our team real quick. This is Bob Arnett, Matt Howard, and our builder, Alan Reese, right here. Great team, all Portsmouth-based, and so we think this is the right project by the right people. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We do have two registered speakers for this item. So, our first speaker is Ms. Erica Nessler. Ms. Nessler, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes, ma'am. Yes, if you would give those to the Sergeant-at-Arms, he will dispense those out to everyone.
Sergeant-at-Arms, the city council already has that document.
Okay. There you go. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Hello. Good evening, council.
You would please state your name and address for the record, please.
Erica Nessler.
Yes, ma'am.
I live at 413 Douglas Avenue. I am the Port Norfolk Civic League president.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. I want to thank you in advance for your consideration of what I'm going to have, what I have to say. I know you all received a letter from me on behalf of the Civic League. I want to address some of the things that weren't said in the letter. We've listened to the gentleman about the styles of home in Port Norfolk and the historic There are no, the guidelines are not specific enough. If anything, there probably needs to be a re-review or an amendment to these, to the guidelines. It talks about types of roofs, types of materials to be used, but it really does not address what can be built. And sometimes, just like the Constitution, things aren't included because you never thought that people would even propose some of those things. The point of, where I'm trying to go is, we have a fabric of a historic, charming community with many, many, many more single-family homes on it. There was, I've passed out a piece, a document from city council back in November of 2010, when this was first voted upon. Originally, there was a discussion of 40 townhomes or attached homes in the original agreement. Later, after review, after discussion, it was revised to having 23 homes on that seven-acre property. Lake Shores is one side, Port Norfolk is the other. We are the historic district. On the Lake Shore side, it was, the decision was respectful, and it was designated that there would be detached, single-family homes. That fits the fabric of their neighborhood. Hamilton, same thing, detached, single-family homes, not in historic district. In Port Norfolk, there has been already three houses built by this group that are detached, respectful of the fabric of the neighborhood. All we are asking is to abide by the original decision and keep it single-family detached homes, so that it fits the fabric of the neighborhood. It blends in. The reason for the historic designation was to prevent very commercial things that don't fit the fabric of the neighborhood. Our neighborhood has never really, has never objected to any of the single-family homes that have been built. There have been several built in Port Norfolk, and we have never bucked those homes in any way, shape, or form because they were detached. So, you already have my letter that I sent with our requests and documentation. So, I request that you please consider this fact. And I know that Mr. Arnett has brought to you all individually, like, well, oh, there's nothing historic on that piece of property. Well, of course, there wasn't. Originally, it was a farm. Then, the creek was filled in pre-EPA with all kinds of junk. The elementary school was built. It was still a field. It remained a field. It was beautiful. It was even on the city's comprehensive plan as green space, up until Mr. Arnett put in an unsolicited bid for that property. And I understand the need for taxes in our city. I understand the need for housing. Just asking for it to be responsible and within the fabric of the neighborhood that it surrounds. I hope you will consider that. Does anybody have any questions for me regarding this? I hope that you will look at this and what it says. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Mr. John Lifcy. Sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. City Manager. My name is John Lifcy. I reside at 229 Mount Vernon Avenue in historic Port Norfolk. I am currently the Vice President of the Port Norfolk Civic League, and I am speaking on their behalf in opposition to UP 2502. Port Norfolk was designated historic district in 1984. Prior to that, there were no building restrictions, which explains the 20 or so apartment buildings and condo complexes. Since 1984, only single-family homes have been built in Port Norfolk. The HPC guidelines for new construction are silent on multifamily structures, but all words and pictures refer to single-family homes. I was on HPC for six years in the 2010, 2016. We never had any issues where anybody tried or even requested anything other than single-family homes. So, there was never any discussion during my time. And I understand that everybody's hanging their hat on HPC has approved this, and I certainly regret that. I can't speak for them, but they shouldn't have, and I wish we'd had a chance to talk about it. Two sentences in the guidelines are important. The first, new buildings ought to be compatible with their historic settings. And two, cash should be taken that the new design does not visually overpower its neighbors. Five townhouses definitely overpower. These five townhouses definitely, they're neither compatible with their historic settings, and they definitely overpower their neighbors. And as Erica noted, in 2010, city council conveyed this property. I want to read a couple of paragraphs. Hulse Creek Properties initially proposed a mix of single-family, attached, and detached single-family for sale, market-rate homes for the property. At the time of execution, the MOI was revised to allow approximately 40 single-family detached housing units excluding attached units. All due diligence contemplated under the MOI has been completed. Hulse Creek Properties has addressed the city, has advised the city that it wishes to proceed with the transaction. And it's important to note that they've already built many houses on this property, and all of them, all of them are single-family. In the second paragraph, "The purpose of the conveyance is to allow the EDA to facilitate private development of the property in a way that preserves and enhances community quality. The city council hereby finds and determines that a conveyance for this purpose is in the public interest." We're not opposed to houses being built on these three properties. Several years ago, the same developer built three right next door to this, single-family homes, and they sold for $350,000. So, the price they're given now is pretty much the same as what they did with the three. Basically, they're looking to sell five instead of three. That's the only difference. We're not opposed to this construction. We just want it to be consistent with our neighborhood of single-family homes. Forty-one years now, single-family homes have been built in Port Norfolk. We ask you all to continue that tradition. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-25-02. If you wish to come and speak on behalf of this item, you're not required to have signed up. If you come forward to speak on it, you will have five minutes. We ask that you state your name and address. It is an open hearing. Is anyone who would wish to come and speak on this item? Please come forward. Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to approve.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Councilmen, is there any additional discussion on this item? Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, I have two questions, one for the applicant and one for our city attorney. I'll start with the attorney. So, we were provided these minutes from a 2010 city council meeting. The properties listed here were two properties on Detroit Street and one property on Douglas Avenue. The property on Douglas Avenue that's listed here isn't any of these properties. So, is this even applicable to our discussion?
It's not applicable for a couple of reasons. The memorandum of intent is not a binding, so even if it were, it would not, it's not a binding document. It's only meant to memorialize the intent of the parties as they're working on a final agreement. They're not enforceable under the law, and in fact, there's a provision in that that says this agreement is non-binding and does not prohibit the parties to agree to other circumstances. And so, noting that, it is very different from an agreement of sorts.
Okay, thank you. And then, for the applicant. So, some question and concern about the suitability for the neighborhood. I get it that the Historic Preservation Group has reviewed and approved, and I know that you brought the builder here. Can you speak to the whose building and the history of the builder?
Yeah, do you want to speak of that, Bob?
Hello, I'm Bob Arnett. Yeah, the builder, we are developers. We used to build back in the day, but we don't, we're not building now. And what we do, we develop lots, we develop subdivisions, we sell lots off to builders of our choice. And Alan is, I met Alan about three or four years ago. He called me up on the phone, and a young builder. We've mentored him. He's building houses for us in Suffolk. He's built two or three houses in Portsmouth, and we think it's an ideal situation for him to, you know, build these, build these units. You know, my vision for Alan is, you know, in the next five years to be building 25 homes a year. So, you know, I think he's a great guy, part of our team, and, you know, we have a lot of confidence in him.
Are there any councilmen?
Thank you, Mayor.
Sir, you have the floor.
Thank you. So, I met with Mr. Arnett a few months ago to discuss this project, and I do think it's a good quality build. But since I've had the conversation with Mr. Arnett, I've spoken with many members of the Port Norfolk community. I have received letters, and I have read those letters, and also had conversations with Civic League members as well. And they voiced a lot of concern in regards to the project. I'm very familiar with this piece of property, and I do not think that this project fits the aesthetics of the neighborhood. And so, with that being said, I will be voting no.
Thank you, sir. Could the applicant please come forward? Are there any other questions from my colleagues? I can't see them on here, and that's why I'm asking. I can't see them on the screen. Hold on. I can see it on the screen. Councilman Dodson, sir, you have the floor. Just raise your hand so I can see it.
Thank you, sir. I didn't realize you couldn't see the lights. The city of Portsmouth is in a desperate need to go up or higher density. We have no land to expand on, so I look at that when I look at these five and go, that's one point for it. And look at the architecture and the code that you have spent so much time in doing, and I think you all have done a really good job selecting the architectural style that meets the historic code. That's two points for it. I look at the density, though, as it fits the neighborhood, and think that if I lived in that neighborhood, I would not want this density in my neighborhood. I would want it to stay with the single-family homes. And I am in a big dilemma on how to vote on this. I really don't know, because we have so many needs that we need to satisfy here, that I'm torn on how to vote. And I wanted to hear from the other council members how they were going to vote and why they were going to vote on this, because I'm at a loss. The big thing that I do know that needs to come out of this is that we severely need a historic code update for not only this neighborhood, but for all of our neighborhoods to handle these situations, so the neighborhood isn't torn, the neighborhood can say, these are our architectural guidelines. And I wanted to ask if there was any other feeling to direct the city manager to consider an update to these historic zones, and that we could have some open forums on them in the near future to make sure this dilemma doesn't come up again. Again, I'm torn. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Thomas, ma'am, you have the floor. Yes, ma'am, you have the floor.
All right, thank you. I was trying to get the signal down there, but thank you. So, yes, I've also done a lot of thinking about this. Mr. Arnett, well-known developer, glad to see you mentoring and bringing along other builders to our city to address some much-needed housing. One of the things I, from reading the Civic League's letter, then we had another citizen email us, so I had to go by and actually look at the property, look at that block, to just kind of get a feel for the neighborhood. The three homes that are adjacent that your group built, what's the lot size comparison to, of those three combined homes, to what the lot is for the proposed five attached? Are they about equal?
Could you please come forward, sir, and answer the questions? No, he needs to come forward.
Yes, yes, sir.
I believe the three, the three single-family lots, I think, are about 5,000, about 5,000 square feet, and I think the townhouse lots are probably, you know, in the 3,000-square-foot range. And I'm not, you know, but that's close.
So, the three single-family homes, 5,000 square feet total?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, you all are right in your assessment that, like, you know, driving through Port Norfolk, there is a mixed, you know, you see some duplexes. You see, I think, right off of Florida, there's another, I don't, it's not an apartment, but there's multifamily housing. However, on this particular street, this particular block of street, there are not really any attached houses other than that apartment building that you can see in the corner. So, I think if I was, even though it does fit the code, you're right, you're within the bounds of what's designated, I think to go along with what the fit of the fabric of not just the Port Norfolk community, but this particular block. There's a beautiful, yellow, you know, colored home across the street from this lot that looks to be historic as well. I think I, although I love the five, the development, the look of it, I think this particular block is better suited to continue that single-family detached homes. So, that's what the Civic League and the community members on this block are wanting, and you've already done three beautiful homes on that street. I think that fits more of the fabric, so that's where I am with the voting of it.
Yeah, when we looked at this and we decided to, on the townhouses, we know across the street from us, they're historic. On our side of the road, and this is the historic area, there is probably, there's an apartment building on the right side of us, the three homes we built, and then there's three homes going up to Detroit Street that are definitely not historic, and I think there might- And I think there might be one historic house on our side. But, you know, we thought the need for, for, you know, attainable housing in the city, you know, I think it's a mandate in the city of Portsmouth. I would think that, you know, you need rooftops, every city needs rooftops with a shortage of houses. And, you know, we thought this would probably be the best, you know, the best, the best product that we could put, you know, we could put on there. Port Norfolk's lot, like a lot of the older neighborhoods, there's not a lot of land available. You're gonna have, and I've talked to a couple of council members about, you know, the next step is, you know, tearing down some of the business, the old town centers were there, and build some town centers with liveovers and some residential, you know, I mean, some office business underneath. So it's changing, and we thought it was appropriate. Anyway, I appreciate, thanks.
Vice Mayor Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. It was mentioned about historic districts and the protection of those. Well, our Historic Preservation Commission, that, that's their job. They are the protector of our city's historic districts. And I'm the council liaison to the Historic Preservation Commission. I was there when the developer and builder presented the product. And they responded to the commission's recommendations. They had to come back with some alterations on the townhouses, and they responded in a positive manner. The other thing that Ms. Nestor mentioned was the, the guidelines. And I guess my question is to the city manager, where do we stand on the material guidelines for our historic districts? To me, that's the, that's the most important thing, and those guidelines have not been updated in a number of years. Mr. Manager, where do we stand on that? Can our planning director speak to it perhaps?
City Manager Carter, sir, you have the floor.
Can you give me more detail about what do you mean by where do we stand? What's actually the question?
Well, in the process, I know, I know the materials review has been on the agenda for some time because new materials come in to the marketplace almost every year. And the commission goes by those materials, either improving or not improving projects, modifications, and what have you. So I know it's been a number of years since those guidelines were updated. So what I'm asking is, is the update underway? Is there a timeline for that?
Dr. Russell, do you have any indication of that? I don't have any indication that there's a review happening at this time.
Good evening. Mr. Carter, Councilman Moody, the update to the Historic Preservation District Guidelines for all of the districts is not currently on the department's work plan. It's one of our priorities for this fiscal period. We can make modifications once we're fully staffed to include it, but to date, our highest priorities are the comprehensive plan update and the innovation district implementation.
And the reason I mention that, because those materials are very important when decisions are being made by the commission, and the commissioners have expressed the need to have that material list updated. So hopefully, it will be a priority real soon. But I, I am going to support this project because it did get unanimous support from the Historic Preservation Commission, the Planning Commission approved it. And also, this council has mentioned many, many times about the need for affordable housing in our city. Now, this housing, compared to some, is affordable. And by the definition, it's also single-family housing. So I intend to support it.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, well, Councilwoman Bryant, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank the Port Norfolk Civic League for their correspondence and for coming out. It's always very helpful to hear from you all when we're weighing these difficult decisions, and this is a difficult one because we're in a position where we are lucky to have five historic districts in our city, and they're all very unique and special. And we certainly want to preserve the character that makes Portsmouth special, while we also acknowledge that we need to move forward, and we want to add attainable housing so that we can invite new people to come and live here. I agree with a lot of what council has said so far, that this was vetted by our Historic Preservation Commission, which I went through the guidelines myself and looked at the statutes for massing and complexity of form, whether those need to change, and that's a conversation that sounds like maybe we, we want to have down the road. The Historic Preservation Commission's job is to make sure that the materials and the size fits the zone. The Planning Commission unanimously approved this, planning staff. And so it comes before us, vetted by our colleagues, and that's weighing heavily in my decision here tonight. Another part that's weighing heavily in my decision is that we want our neighborhoods to become more vibrant. We want them to become active, we want them to thrive. And when we add housing like this that's attainable, we bring in families, and we create that vibrancy that we're striving for. So what I hope to see with this project is, yes, I understand it might not be the project that everyone wants in Port Norfolk, but I, I do hope that it fits a different need, which is to bring people into Portsmouth and to bring life and activity to Port Norfolk in potentially new ways. So I appreciate all of the comments, and I understand that this is a difficult balance, and thank you for letting us share our opinions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And if I could ask, Councilwoman Thomas, ma'am, you have the floor.
Yeah, one question, sorry. We've been talking about the Historic Preservation Commission. Do we have any representation from them here today to kind of speak on their decision? Unanimous decision? No?
No, we do not, ma'am.
And one of the questions I did ask, I wanted to know was, did, how do they work with our Civic Leagues? Can I get some background on that? Do they normally make decisions kind of within their own commission, similar to our Planning Commission? Or do they coordinate with the Civic Leagues for the historic communities that they work within?
I'm not 100% sure, but I know that Councilman Hugel and, I believe, Councilman Dotson are liaisons to the Planning Commission, so they probably would have been in the room when the discussion was taking place. I, I'm not, I'm not sure, sir, do you have anything to add to that discussion?
So I think the question was the Historic Preservation Commission working with Civic Leagues?
Do they, do they talk to the Civic Leagues of the, the historic community that they're working and approving these projects with?
So I defer to the Vice Mayor, who's the council liaison to Historic Preservation.
That's a good point. Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Moody, can you please elaborate on some of those questions?
Well, my answer to, to my colleague would be, they work with the Civic Leagues in that they, they are the protector of the historic stock in the communities. And part of that is making sure that the materials, and that was part of my question to the city manager, that the materials are acceptable materials according to the established material guidelines. So in that respect, yeah, they, they work with the Civic Leagues in being the protector of the historic stock. Now, those meetings are certainly public meetings and can be attended by any of us, you know, any members of the public, just like the Planning Commission. So, and I will say that the commission has an architect on the commission as well. So, and each of, each of the five historic districts are represented on the commission. So in that respect, they, you know, Port Norfolk has one. Each of the other four historic districts has a representation on the commission. And once again, the commission supported it unanimously. So hopefully, that answers your question.
It does, but it, it does answer my question. It was also kind of one of my thoughts about the surprise when there was a disconnect between what the Civic League's voice was and the historic commission, but it does answer my question. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do have a question for, for the applicant, and this is just, so, so can, can you come to the, to the podium, please, so I can ask the question? When, when you all are making a decision, what, what goes into your decision process of attached housing versus single-family housing?
Well, a lot, a lot, a lot. It's not a simple decision, but...
Well, yeah, just condense it for me.
Right, but, but cost is the number-one factor, and the ability to bring affordable product to the market. That's probably the most important consideration. How much do the units, how much does it cost to build them? And how much will you need to sell at a certain price to, to recover those costs? So that, that's, that's probably the number-one factor for us. And then secondarily, it's also trying to make a judgment call about what you think is appropriate. And that's why, you know, so much attention gets put on, particularly in historic districts, where so much attention, so much review, so much detailed design effort goes into this. You know, so that's another secondary consideration, is where you're working. And, and I think from our perspective, you know, we see, you know, like I talked about, the missing middle. We see missing middle housing stock. And, you know, that, that's a third consideration for us, you know, to, to be able to deliver something that the market isn't supplying. And so those are the three considerations that go into making the decision of what to build, or what to propose, rather.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion and a second. We've had our discussion. I would ask that now to my colleagues if you would please vote electronically.
This item is adopted 5-2.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our next item, item B, UP-25-05. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution we are considering for this item?
Yes, sir. Resolution granting the request of C. Hogan's for use permit to operate an entertainment establishment at 1805 Hodges Ferry Road in the general mixed-use zoning district. The property is owned by A.R.S. Enterprises, LLC. The future land use map of the Bill 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property as a mixed-use corridor. The Planning Commission recommends approval with conditions, and the actual resolution reads, "A resolution granting a use permit, UP-25-05, to C. Hogan's to operate an entertainment establishment at 1805 Hodges Ferry Road."
Thank you, ma'am. Is the applicant present?
Yes, sir.
If you would come forward, sir, state your name and address. You will have 10 minutes.
Thank you, city council members. My name's Charles Hogan. I'm the co-owner, along with Anthony Cooper. Fortunately, he had to work, so he won't be present. And we're here today to seek an entertainment permit. The reason, to offer opportunity to the city and the community. Little nervous.
Take, take, take your time, sir.
A little nervous, I'm not fluent.
It's okay, take your time. You have 10 minutes, so take your time.
Okay, so the reason, like I said, is to offer the opportunity to the city and community a safe, friendly, and relaxing atmosphere with great food. Okay? A comfortable place for family dining in a cool, relaxing atmosphere. I Crave, which is the name of the restaurant, is our identity. And the definition of I crave is a strong desire for something. Okay? We, as a restaurant, have a strong desire to serve the opportunity to uplift the community, uphold the laws set forth by the city and the state, and share an atmosphere of respect. Not only having great food, but also featuring karaoke, special events such as weddings, graduations, and all types of other celebrations. Security and safety is paramount. Licensed security officers and off-duty police officers will be used as required. So the narrative expresses our desire to operate a fun, safe, friendly entertainment and neighborly restaurant. Thank you for your time, and hope I get approved.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Dotson, sir, you have the floor.
I've been into your restaurant twice this month.
Okay.
Y'all have the most fantastic food.
Thank you.
It's marvelous. We'll, we'll be back to visit you quite, quite a few more times.
Thank you.
In your first agreement that you had, you said, you said you were going to add some, satisfy the parking requirement by using the lot next door?
Yes.
I didn't quite see where that agreement said that other building next door would not be used. Because if that building is used at the same time you're using it, it voids the parking agreement there. So therefore, the building where you're using that parking must be a non-used building.
Is that a law, are you asking? So the building itself is owned by another individual?
Right.
Okay, who we, we know quite well. And we, like, when they have, it's, it's a vent hall, is what he uses it for. So his events are planned and sporadic. There's nothing consistent. So we will coordinate with them. If we have an event, we'll make sure that it doesn't conflict. So we use each other's parking lot. And it's more of a verbal agreement than it is a written agreement.
I know, but for us to grant it, there would have to be some, I think some, if you agree that that would be your overspill parking, there would have to be some firm agreement for us to understand that, that you could violate a verbal agreement at any time. I, I feel like there needs to be more of a concrete agreement between the two, the two, that no activities would take place at the same time.
Okay, so certified, we can put something in writing?
I, I understand it.
No, it's not available right now because you have just come up with this suggestion. We can take that in consideration with that.
I understand. Great food, thank you. Thank you.
So we'll need that overflow, if you keep bringing...
Yeah, if we keep bringing friends.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Does that conclude your presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. This, we do have a registered speaker for this item, and it is Mr. Fred Porter. Mr. Porter, if you would come forward, state your name and address, sir. You will have five minutes.
My name is Fred Porter. I live at 800 Arnold Palmer Drive in the great city of Portsmouth. And Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Council, City Council members, Mr. City Manager, you'll find in front of you a document that I wrote called "Iceberg Right Ahead." Now, I want to talk a little bit about that. We all know the story about the Titanic, where she ran into an iceberg and sank. What we all don't know was that the iceberg was there, very quiet, very silent. Nobody knew it was there. The four officers that survived the sinking of the Titanic all testified to a man that had they known that the iceberg was there, they would have, they would have operated the Titanic in an entirely different manner. Well, what does that have to do with us? Well, Portsmouth has an iceberg too. And the tip of the iceberg that we see is this use permit that you're issuing for 1805 Hodges Ferry Road, which is an old 2,700-square-foot 711 built in 1962, for those interested in history. So what we don't see is the part of the iceberg underwater, and what we don't see is the unequal requirement for code compliance. Now, we know that there are several code violations at this building. We know that it doesn't meet ADA requirements, compliance for handicap parking. We know... We know that it doesn't meet NFPA requirements for egress. That's kind of important if you've got 125 people in a 2,700-square-foot building. It does not meet those requirements. It will not meet those requirements unless you put an extra door in. Because there is a requirement called the separation of egress based upon the distance of the diagonal of the building, for those of you that are in architecture, and this building doesn't meet that. It's an old 7-Eleven, and the doors they're using for egress is the old janitor's closet. Now, the city ordinance, you have your own city ordinance that says a parking space must be 11 feet wide and 19 feet long. Eight of those parking spaces don't meet that requirement. You have a code requirement that says that parking spaces must be separated from the building by seven feet. Six of those parking spaces do not meet that requirement. There's also this fuzzy area of on-street parking and off-street parking. Your current code allows on-street parking to be used to satisfy off-street parking state requirements. That's a wonderful idea in Old Town, but it really sucks where I live. Okay, so how do I know all of this? Well, I know that, that several people know these code violations. I know that the planning director and her staff member know it because I pointed it out to them on the 28th of May at a site visit. You have this in front of you, you can read along with it. Take it home and enjoy it. I also know that the Planning Commission members know of these violations because I pointed it out at their 3-June, their 6-May planning meeting, listed all of the violations. I know that the deputy fire chief knows because I met him personally, I toured the property with him, and I gave him the packet of information that I've given to several of you. I know that the Planning Commission, Mr. Ocasio-Gui, knows because I sent him a packet of information, and after three times with your wonderful city IT system, he finally got it. So what, what's the problem here? The problem is we are approving a use permit with known code violations, and we are deciding to turn a blind eye to code requirements. You can't sustain that. You've already been sucked into a lawsuit, and I won't mention the name, but there's a guy suing a state agency, and you guys have been sucked into it as corespondents. You can't arbitrarily and capriciously ignore code requirements for one party and imply, and apply them judiciously for a second party. That second party will find out, that second party will file lawsuit, and you can't win. So your system is broke. Now, Portsmouth is headed for a collision. Portsmouth's got its own iceberg, and you're focused right in on it. So how do we fix it? You need to fix the process. Your process is broken. And I recommend that you don't do any, any use permit authorizations that employ code violations until you fix the process. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Tillage, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. A lot of information was just provided, but I have a question for city staff. The requirements that the speaker was mentioning, is that pertaining to a new building or to an existing building? Because I know this building has some age on it.
Mr. Carter, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to ask Dr. Tom, I'm sorry, Dr. Russell, if she would reply to that.
Councilman Tillage, those requirements are for new buildings that would be built according to the current standards of our zoning and, and building code.
Got you. So due to the age of this building, it would not fall under those?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. My, my question is similar. Of the alleged code violations mentioned, are all those subject to new construction? Or, or any of those alleged violations pertain to the existing structure?
Mr. Carter, usually Mike Miller is sitting back there behind us, is the inspections department here. And the only reason I ask is for ingress and egress, that's the only one that I'm really concerned about. Having said that, through the permitting and review process, those issues would, would be addressed. The parking, improvements to the parking are not required. Improvements to buffer areas adjacent to parking is not required. And I had a long conversation earlier today about the reasons why you do want these old structures to have some viability for reuse. And this is not specific to this property, but when you have a building that is, is old as this building is, if we were to require that they meet the current parking standard and everything adjacent to them is developed, they would not be able to do so. And so the building would lay fallow. And so that's why ordinances have provisions that allow reuse without meeting or coming up to current standards.
Does that, does that include ADA requirements?
That's the reason why I want to defer to the inspections department for that.
Mr. Carter, sir, you have the floor.
Mr. Mayor, could you come to the podium and address that if you can, please?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor, City Council.
Evening, sir.
Vice Mayor, your question regarding this building and how it'd have to be evaluated, in permits inspections, we did not evaluate the building based on the fact that it was going to be used for some sort of entertainment. It was evaluated as it was going to continue to operate, as it did when it was, say, Clayton's or whoever came in before that. So it's been looked at as a basic restaurant, even though entertainment where it would fall under, being a nightclub use, would be sort of in, it's in the same occupancy class, but it gets looked at a little bit different. And when you change that a little bit, there may be something that needs to be upgraded for ADA because you've, you've made an improvement. And when you make an improvement, you have to do something with ADA.
So in other words, we have to go back and analyze it on what it's proposed to be at the current time. Is that correct?
Yes, it, it would be good, be wise to come back and reevaluate it based on the fact that you're going to add an entertainment component to it. It's not just going to be a basic restaurant at that point. We look at the floor plan, and we may suggest some changes to, to update a few things in there for safety. Because you, you tend to draw more people to an event like that, and people tend to just not be aware of their surroundings in, in a place like that versus just a simple restaurant.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Councilman Hugo, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I'll preface my comments by saying, the last couple of meetings, we have addressed venues like this and use permits related to venues like this. And we deferred decisions on those pending the work that we're doing with the city manager and his team to rework some city code around the rules that are in place that need to be buffed up a little bit for, for these kind of operations. And so based on that, it'll be my intent when we come out of public hearing to, to move that we defer this. So that's my prefacing comment. That said, whether we defer it tonight or not, I, I do think, and Dr. Russell and I had a long conversation this afternoon around parking specifically, because as I told her, I think the neighbors have raised, in my mind, a legitimate issue about the capacity of the building versus the available parking around the building. And so I suggested to her that if, in fact, we defer tonight, that maybe that provides some time for some conversation to occur between the applicant and the planning department around the whole parking issue, to find out if there's a way to satisfy the, the neighbors' concerns around parking, either by addressing the language that I think we're working on in this code update that would include some words in there about parking requirements that are different than what we currently have, or might be addressed by limiting the capacity of the building. And if the applicant is, is willing to, to limit the capacity so that the capacity of the people and the capacity of the parking kind of come into sync. So there's a couple ways that this could be addressed to satisfy the concerns of the neighborhood and still ultimately give the applicant a yes answer. And so I guess my hope is that we take advantage, if in fact we do defer tonight, like I hope we do, that we take advantage of the time between now and, and when we come back to revisit this with the code updates for the conversation to occur, and, and we consider maybe implementing some additional conditions beyond what was discussed in the Planning Commission that would specifically address the neighbors' concerns around the number of people that can be there versus the number of cars it's going to take to get that number of people there.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Thomas, you have the floor.
Yes, I want to add on to what Councilman Hugo just suggested about the possible delay, but for the reasons of parking, and I think, sorry, drawing a blank, Councilman Dotson next to me, the suggestion about, I believe the owner mentioned you have a verbal agreement with another property owner to address parking, but so that we have, even though staff has stated that the requirement is not based on occupancy, but more so square footage. Is that correct? Okay. I think to address some of the concerns of that surrounding neighborhood, that we have something more in place to, to hold, because I think you're going to be crowded and well, you know, well-received based on the recommendation and review of the establishment already that the community has already provided, that we should probably address, that I, I agree with Delaney to address park, the parking issue, and also it probably will coincide with the ordinance that we're working on as well.
Councilman Hugo, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So to, to follow up on, on Councilwoman Thomas's comment, the planning director did provide to the Planning Commission some additional language beyond the original language that we were briefed on. If you remember, we talked about parking as needing to be addressed in the update to our code. In fact, they're working on that language, and it, what she showed the Planning Commission would require a written agreement between the, the business owner and anybody that's around that's going to provide him with some additional parking. So it's another reason to, to defer what we're doing until we get that language finalized and approved, in my opinion.
Thank you, sir. And thank you all for your comments. Once again, this is, sir, sir, you, unless, unless a question is posed for you to come and answer, you've had your time to speak as the applicant. And this is a public hearing. So if there's anyone else who wishes to come and speak on this public hearing item, you can come forward and do so. At this time, state your name and address. Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. Council members, we are in need of a motion.
I do want to just point out that there was an ADA issue that was presented. I'd ask the council to also consider that moving forward.
Yes.
ADA is a federal statute, cannot be waived or...
Thank you, Madam Attorney. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
So, so acknowledging the city attorney's admonition to not bypass federal requirements, I move that we defer this item to the 26 August City Council meeting to revisit then.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion on this deferment? Seeing none, please vote electronically. And yeses to defer, is that correct?
Yes, sir. This item is deferred 7-0.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
We are now moving on with the agenda to our city manager's report, Item 25-196. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance accepting a grant, excuse, please the ordinance we are considering for this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $676,663 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services and appropriating said funds in the FY 2026 Grants Fund to operate local probation and pre-trial services in Portsmouth.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted 7-0.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item, Item 25-197. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering for this item?
An ordinance accepting hazmat response cost recovery funding in the amount of $9,234.99 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management and appropriating said amount in the FY 2026 Grants Fund for the purpose of maintaining hazardous material team response capabilities.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move it up.
A second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically. Councilman Tillage.
Oh.
Thank you, sir.
This item is adopted 7-0.
Our next item, Item 25-199?
9-8.
9-8, 198. Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
An ordinance accepting state shared expense revenue in the amount of $152,591 and appropriating $138,802 of said amount to the judicial section and $13,789 of said amount to the general government section of the FY 2026 general fund budget for the payment of one-time personnel bonuses.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt.
A second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted 7-0.
Item 25-199. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
An ordinance amending Article 5 Public Procurement of Chapter 12 Finance of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia by adding a new Section 12-188 regarding contracts for information, technology, goods, or services.
Thank you. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt.
A second.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted 7-0.
Item 25-200. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
An ordinance appropriating $625,000 from the fund balance of the Behavioral Healthcare Services Fund to the FY 2026 Behavioral Healthcare Service Fund budget for the purpose of acquiring business software and office technologies.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted 7-0.
Item 25-201. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
An ordinance accepting settlement funds in the amount of $24,733.62 from an opioid settlement and appropriating said amount in the FY 2026 Behavioral Healthcare Service Fund for use by BHS for approved abatement purposes and defined by the Virginia Opioid Fund and Settlement Allocation MOU.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted 7-0.
That concludes... That concludes our city manager's report section of the agenda. We are now moving to new business. Item 25-202, boards and commissions. And Councilman Hugo, are there any boards and commissions to report?
There are no board and commission items for this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. The next item, item 25-203, items submitted by council members. Are there any items to submit by council? Seeing none, I do have one item to submit. On July 1st, a very special citizen, a first citizen of the City of Portsmouth, celebrated his 100th birthday. If you know Mr. Horace Savage, you know that he is a legend in our city, an educator, a leader, a father, my mentor, and a person who has touched the lives of thousands in our community, a coach, a public servant, in addition to all of the other accolades he should and will receive. We will celebrate Mr. Savage on July 12 at the Edmund Center. And I just want to let you know that people like Mr. Savage are what Portsmouth is all about. And so if you know of Mr. Savage or if you've ever heard of him, I would ask that you continue to keep him in your thoughts and prayers. And I would also like to mention, because the city attorney asked me to, that Mr. Savage is a graduate of the greatest high school in the country, IC Norcom High School. And so, thank you, Mr. Savage, and we all wish you many more years of health and happiness. Happy birthday. Moving right along, item 25-204, report on pending items. Mr. Carter, sir, do you have a report on any pending items?
Yes, sir, I do. Thank you, Mayor. In your package, you should find a report back for the last city council meeting, but I also want to give you an update that on June 23, City of Portsmouth switched to a new billing system for public utilities. We understand that this didn't go as smoothly as we had hoped or anticipated, and we apologize for any, for the confusion that we've caused in this process. However, our team has been working diligently to resolve these issues. In fact, we worked throughout this entire weekend to get close to where we think is all the issues resolved. What actually happened, some phone and online payments were misrouted and evidently never posted. Also, those same payments were not charged to those customers that attempted those payments. So we're reaching out directly to those customers to instruct them to resubmit their payments so that we can get that portion of it resolved. Additionally, there are some delays in posting payments due to the transition and to some posting issues that we had immediately after go live. If you've made a payment in the last two to three weeks, those payments are being posted now and all of them, we're about through all of them, so we're back caught up again. But we should have all of those completed by the end of this week. What we're doing to try to make things right, first of all, there's no late fees or any penalties going to be assessed to anybody throughout this transition period. You don't need to come and wait in line or even wait on the phone. We're personally reviewing each account to ensure that no one is charged incorrectly. And when we find their mistakes, we're correcting them. We're making phone calls, we're sending letters, and we're emailing customers who are affected so that they know what the effects are and what the resolution is for them. We're also meeting with the software company to discuss what went wrong and how these improvements, how we can make improvements as we move forward. Finally, we are meeting internally as a team. The whole team that's responsible for this process is meeting with me every Tuesday morning at 8:00 AM to give me an update and ensure that we're moving forward and making this process as, getting through this process as quickly as we can. Again, thank you, citizens, thank you, council, for your patience as we work through this. But rest assured, we're working on it, we will continue to work on it, we will not stop until everything is corrected. My final thing for this evening, I have with us Ms. Kimberly Sinclair. If you'll stand for just a moment, Ms. Sinclair is our new HR Director coming to the City of Portsmouth, bringing over a decade of experience in HR leadership. She's, has extensive expertise in employee relations, compensation and benefits, talent development, organizational effectiveness, and employment law compliance. Ms. Sinclair holds a bachelor's, I'm sorry, a master's of administration with a concentration in acquisitions and a bachelor of science in human resources and training. She's a member of the Society of Human Resource Management and actively involved in various communities and organizations. She's passionate about aligning human capital strategies with the city's mission to service employees and residents with integrity and professionalism. I introduce to you Mrs. Kimberly Sinclair. Thank you.
Welcome, welcome to the team, Ms. Sinclair. Thank you.
Final announcement is we have made an offer and have an acceptance for a new CFO. Hopefully by the next council meeting, we have her on board and we'll be able to make that introduction also. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Carter. Moving right along, we have come to non-agenda speakers, item 25-205. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the speaker's statement?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the City Council as a body rather than to any particular member of City Council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Our first speaker is Mr. Aaron Cody. Mr. Cody, sir, if you will come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, City Council. Thank you for your service. I am Aaron Cody and my address is 2908 Tambarque Lane. The last time I spoke with you, I described the benefits of ranked choice voting. There are also criticisms, some legitimate, some misinformed. You heard two of the misinformed criticisms after my first ranked choice voting presentation. One was, it dumps votes. This is not correct. In no voting system used in the United States, including ranked choice voting, is a cast, an eligible ballot vote dumped or not counted. In ranked choice voting, a ballot may be exhausted if a voter, a voter chooses not to mark sufficient preferences to continue through the necessary rounds of instant runoff election to determine a majority winner. The number of preferences to mark on a ballot is each voter's choice. In our current voting system, all of our ballots are exhausted after the first round because, well, we only have one round. The result is we are currently represented by City Council members who do not have a demonstrated majority of voter support. In ranked choice voting, a vote cast on an exhausted ballot still counts. For the last preference, the voter chose. The vote always counts. It just might not count for the majority winner. This happens in elections. There can be only one winner for each seat. Every other candidate loses the election. The problem ranked choice voting fixes is it increases the likelihood the winner will have a demonstrated majority of voter support. The second misinformed criticism was it violates one person, one vote. This is also not correct. In ranked choice voting, each and every cast and eligible ballot counts as one vote and only one vote in each round of the instant runoff election. More importantly, for multi-seat elections like we have here in Portsmouth, each vote only counts once to elect a majority winner for one seat, which increases the likelihood of broad majority representation on the whole city council. This is not what we have now. Excluding the mayor, we have six city council members elected with less than 20% of the vote each. If that group of less than 20% of the voters voted for four or more of the six candidates who won in the last two elections, then less than 20% of the voters in Portsmouth would have a greater influence on the outcome of city council votes than the other more than 80%. Having the will of 20% imposed on the other 80% would not be true representative democracy. The worst part is the number of voters who voted for two or more of the winning candidates in the last two elections is not a reported election result. So we don't even know the extent of the non-majority representation. Ranked choice voting fixes this lack of transparency. My next presentation will address additional criticisms of ranked choice voting. I will be available again after this meeting to answer questions or to listen to comments. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Dodson, sir, you have the floor.
Mr. Cody had a question. So ranked choice voting was just used in a major election out west, I believe, as an evaluation. Is there any data you have to report on that?
Ranked choice voting was just used in the New York City. But that's not out west. That's the election you're thinking of?
The big one.
Yeah, yeah. There's data that shows that ranked choice voting affected the outcome of that election.
Okay. Do you have any of that data handy?
No, but I can get it for you.
Would you? Thank you.
Absolutely.
Our next speaker is Mr. Michael Smith. Mr. Smith, if you will come forward, state your name and address, sir. You will have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor.
Microphone down to you so we can hear you, sir.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor. This is my first time, City Council, and all aboard members. So the reason why I am here is because I'm registered with the IRS. I have my Articles of Organization. So I have all my supporting documents as of right now to operate as a entity in the state of Virginia. My company is called Mission. My company is called Mission by, my company is called Mission Led by Love Services. I created my company as, out of frustration of needing some of the same services that my company is going to provide. To be candidly, I'm going through an eviction process as I speak because individuals that may seek funding or help from systems like Virginia 111 and other services that's out there to help the public, I have identified issues. For example, when you call these outreach programs, first of all, they say, hey, your name has to be put on a waiting list. I identify that as problem number one. Problem number two, they say, well, the only way we can help you or any individuals this month is your name has to be arbitrarily picked. I identify that as problem number two. The thing that really got me is that they say, they say, they say, have you received your late notice as of yet? By the time you get your late notice, it's already too late. So I know I'm running out of time. The point that I'm trying to make is this how I've started my company that is going to be registered as a LLC nonprofit? I am, I already hired a company to work the documents that's going to designate that designation as a 501(c). I am here tonight to say, hey, I'm a new entrepreneur in the city. I just need to know to be led in the right direction of how to apply for state grants and funding. That's big term because my company is going to help individuals of the same need, same need of services that I myself have been in need of, whether it be rents, utility, lights, anything of that matter. I came up with my company because, a little background, I've, I got my business administration degree, a bachelor's degree in business and administration. I am currently going straight to university right now to get my MBA degree. I have four classes left before I get my master's degree. Basically, what I'm saying is I've taken the steps that I learned in the classroom of theory and made it practical and started my own company. And all I'm asking is that, short term, right now, what I want to do is I want to pass out 4,000 bottles of water because it's hot. And we have a lot of homelessness people that's living on the street. And I'm doing the footwork of asking for donations. I'm registered with GoFundMe. I have a Cash App app. There's no minimum, there's no maximum. I'm just doing the service of the people, trying to be part of the solution and not the problem. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Smith, I want you to know that that was very courageous of you to come up here. And so there are resources in our city perhaps that we can put you in touch with. I would ask that you remain after the council meeting we have, have representatives here. Mr. Carter, can you speak to that? Representatives you might be able to talk to.
Mr. Smith, if you would see the young lady sitting at the first desk, give her your name and contact information.
Yes.
We can take care of you from there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker, Frances Olson. Frances Olson, ma'am, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
My name is Frances Olson. I live at 18 Parkview Avenue in Portsmouth, Virginia. I rarely have need to come down to City Hall. You guys do everything pretty efficiently and you have fantastic staff. But I came down for my water bill, wanted to make sure I had everything set for that. Yes, came down yesterday. I'm a grumpy old lady. I have a grumpy old back. I tried to find handicap parking in the garage. There was probably meets the minimum of three per 62 spaces. But then there are other spaces that were open, covered with red bags from the police department blocking them off for you guys parking for council meeting. I was here at 10 o'clock. I understand you were meeting at 5:00. Come on, guys. That's not fair to make us wander around trying to find spots. Well, I found one place parked and went into the, take the elevators. Now, this is nothing new to you guys. That one elevator, when has that last worked? The other elevator wasn't working. Grumpy and me don't do steps really well, but I can do them. But where were the steps? It's a real mystery. My question for you is, when will the elevator be fixed from the garage? Anybody have an answer?
City Manager Carter, could you address that, please?
Where's the city man? There he is.
Good evening, ma'am. There's an elevator that's working, there's one elevator that's not working, but there is an elevator that is working.
It was not on Monday.
It was not on Monday?
It was not on Monday. And there was no sign to tell me, censoring my words here.
That's okay.
The stairs were. So I went out to the parking lot out and walked in and walked in from the outside. But no, it was not working. And then when I got upstairs to the...
Second floor? Or first floor?
First floor.
Yes, ma'am.
It wasn't working.
Okay. So that was, that's been resolved.
There were two elevators out, one working.
All right, there's two working, one out now. All right. But we also have already solicited and awarded a contract to replace all three elevators.
And is there a timeframe on that?
They're ordering parts right now. They tell me there's about a six-month process to get the parts. This is a...
Old.
An old building?
I know old.
Yes, ma'am.
Old works.
I didn't want to use that word, but...
No, it's all, there's nothing wrong with old.
Yes, ma'am.
I am a, I can't think of the name of it. I have, I make jokes about being old. Not everybody gets to be old.
But yes, ma'am. That contract is... That contract has already been awarded.
That's good to know.
And we're just waiting on parts to come in so that we can actually get the elevators replaced.
Put a time limit on those red bags over the parking things for, you know, do they have to be on there at 10:00 in the morning for a 5:00 meeting?
Absolutely not, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. We appreciate the feedback. Our next speaker is Mr. Norman McAllister. Mr. McAllister, if you would come forward, state your name and address, sir. You will have five minutes.
Hey, how you doing? I'm Norman McAllister, 1709 Charleston. I received some mail Thursday, and it was for, you know, the property taxes you pay on your vehicle. And initially, I'm like, well, I already paid that. So when I looked at it, it was in reference to a vehicle that I purchased June the 15th. And it was to pay roughly around $800 before July the 30th. If I get it, there's a penalty of 10%. So initially, I'm like, okay, I just paid already for the year. So when I went down, came down here this morning, I was confused that, basically, the person told me that after the 5th, the taxes for the vehicles are due on the 5th. After the 5th, there's a, after the 5th, there's a penalty. I bought the vehicle June the 15th. So I'm wondering, why do I got to pay this $800? Because it makes no sense. Because if you're saying to me, if there's a penalty after the 5th, and I bought the vehicle on the 15th, but you're saying that you give a 10-day leeway for, I don't understand the leeway for one, but my astonishment is that literally, if I don't pay this $800, I'm going to have to pay a penalty with that, which I did and paid it all this morning. But literally, that was money that I could have used for bread, water, milk, and cheese. And I was basically forced to pay it because there would have been a penalty if I didn't. And on another note, I've been staying where I live roughly around, since 2011, and there hasn't been a year that my taxes have not went up. Not one single year, maybe one. But since 2011 until 2026, I have had a tax increase every year, which sounds ridiculous. And I'm so frustrated about it because I keep hearing, oh, that's a good thing because you can sell your house for more. Suppose I'm, I'm in my 50s. I ain't trying to move nowhere. So in other words, I feel like I'm getting priced out of my own house because the taxes keep raising every single year, which makes no sense to me. I don't care how many houses they build that look like my house around the corner, up the block, every single year? So thank you for listening.
Mr. McAllister, sir, I do want to add something to you, to help you a little bit. In terms of your real estate tax on your property, that's going through the assessor's office. And they, I just wanted to give you some information, sir. You know, there is an appeal process if you don't agree with the assessment of your home. So that's something you can take up with the assessor's office.
I've tried that.
Okay. Well, I mean, we all have, we all have that right to do that.
And I appreciate you, Mr. Smith. I've been there.
Absolutely, sir. But I just want to give you.
And I still get a high bill next year.
Yes, sir.
But I appreciate you, though.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. Daniel House. Mr. House, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
I'm Daniel House. I live at 114 Gillis Road. I'm here today to shed light on the city's brokenness concerning vacant and delinquent structures, or derelict structures, like the one at 54 Prospect Parkway that's been vacant for 22 years. Yep, 22 years. So I did a Freedom of Information request. There's no condemned structure notices, no derelict property notices, no monthly vacant building authorization. No permits regarding the plumbing or disturbed land in the front yard. But the city's response emphasized that there is no permit required to board up a structure or entrances or windows. The city indicated that the vacant building registration was never received from the owner. So a vacant structure fee penalty of $50 was attached to the property in a form in lieu of a lien by the city. This penalty registers the property under the vacant structure program for 12 months, and the registration expires 1/23/26. But City Code 17136 fees says, all classes of building, whether residential, institutional, commercial, industrial, which have been vacant for a period of 12 months or more, require an annual registration fee. This property has been vacant for 22 years, and late 2024 was the first attempt to register it as a vacant structure. Where's the city the last two decades to collect the annual fees? This vacant property penalty was levied by the city is actually a reassignment of the vacant structure registration that was the owner's responsibility, but the city authorized the reassignment on behalf of the property owner, which is prohibited under Section 17135B, or the registration for permits forms, letter certification, and non-assignable. That's a key word. And it states, permits shall be on forms supplied by the director or designee for such purposes and shall include the name of persons to whom it was issued, a full address of the building covered, a statement that the required fees have been paid, and the expiration date of the permit. The last sentence in that section that says, no permit or registration shall be assignable. This makes the city's reassignment of the registration a violation of this code. 17134 states, when such registration is accomplished and fees set forth are paid, then the director shall issue a permit allowing the building to be maintained and boarded up condition for a period of one month from that date. And later on, the permit must be obtained or renewed annually while the building remains vacant or unoccupied. A permit shall be issued by the director or his designee upon receipt by the director or his designee of the, a letter of certification. This is the same permit that the FOIA indicated was not required. The city has not provided any documentation whatsoever. A letter of certification was not provided. No fees were provided. The names of interested parties responsible for the property were not recorded. Facts, conditions of the vacancy were not recorded. The building became vacant, the date the building became vacant was not listed. And the length of time the building was expected to remain vacant or unoccupied was not recorded. The city's Historical Preservation Commission met 11/11/23 regarding this property. And the property was purchased on about 2002, has been ruined since. It's been vacant with the last tenant and has been vacant for approximately 22 years. The property is repairable, but the owner wanted to demolish the historic house, but the HBC denied the motion 5 to 2. All the utilities are disconnected from the structure. There's a sewer line that's been disconnected with a hole in the yard, and it meets all the qualifications for a derelict property per city, per Virginia Code. The FOIA response again indicated no permit was needed to board up windows or doors, but 17134 specifically states, otherwise, the director shall issue permits allowing the building to remain boarded up in the condition for a period of one month from that date, and then a period must be obtained and renewed annually. I ask the city council to do an audit on all vacant structure registrations to see if liens were levied instead of fees being paid prior to the issuance of either an initial or annual registration permit and determine if submissions of those requests were accomplished by the city code's enforcement or by the owner of the property as required by 17134 and 135. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Could you, the address that you just talked about?
58 Prospect Parkway.
Councilwoman Thomas, ma'am, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. House.
Thank you.
And we, you're on it with the CCL fix and sending us the emails and staying diligent about what's going on around in our city neighborhoods. So thank you for your due diligence in those areas. I do want to ask, because this has been something that is on my mind a bit anyway, can I get some clarity on what is, I know Mr. House stated the code. I don't have it in front of me, regarding our process for vacant or boarded up houses. And this is a concern to me as we are working to improve city blight, neighborhood investment, crime, and what those vacant properties do to neighborhoods, especially around crime, public safety, and just overall feel of neighborhoods, as we're trying to move Portsmouth forward. So I want to get a little bit more clarity on what are, what does that look like? Because if, again, I don't have the history, what you just read in front of me, but if a property's been vacant for 22 years, what would that process look like to get the owner or to get something moved forward with that type of property? And the city attorney, let me know if that, if I can ask that type of question here. Okay. All right. And Mr. Carter, if you don't mind.
Mr. Carter, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, ma'am. There is a process that we have to go through with this, and what I like to do is investigate the property. That's why I asked before the address, so we can investigate the property and make sure of, you know, validate the things that Mr. House have brought forward, but also look at what we've done and what the real process is. I put together in our report back for our next meeting what the actual steps need to be so that we can verify that we're doing that and we can validate that whatever happened with this address happened appropriately.
Thank you.
If I may provide one other comment?
Yes, sir.
So you do have a derelict property program, okay, that the city has? And there's a sheet that goes over the outside of the folder, but there's nowhere in that process that requires registration. The Virginia Code requires that if a property is derelict, it means it's vacant, it's boarded up, and it's not connected to any of the utilities, water, electricity, or sewage, then it's considered derelict. Okay? And at that point, the Virginia Code says that there shall be a fine of $200 for not registering that property. So this property, the issue at hand, is registered as a vacant property, but it's already derelict because it meets all three of those prongs. Okay? So to, my issue is that you're using a civil penalty, but you're taking that civil penalty and you're saying, hey, we're going to register it because it's vacant on your behalf, which is, the law forbids that, is non-assignable. That's my whole issue, is the city's doing this. And when I brought it to the city's attention, they're like, I was like, you can't do this. The code says you can't do it. And they're like, well, I'll get back with you. And I won't go into any names, okay? But that's the response that I got.
Well, I think this is a very good conversation to have and continue. Your time has been expired.
Thank you.
So we can have a follow-up conversation as to how we go forward. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Mr. James Copeland. Mr. Copeland, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, City Council. My name is James Copeland. I live at 131 Afton Parkway in Portsmouth, Virginia. City Council, today I rise not in anger, but in a duty, a duty to my neighbors, to my city, and to the families who pass daily through the crossroads of Victory Boulevard and Afton Parkway. This intersection, seemingly quiet, a straight stretch of road, is not safe. It invites high speed and encourages haste of driver. And because of that, it has become the stage for no fewer than eight major accidents in recent years. These are not fender benders or slight accidents. These are crashes that shake my house, call ambulances, and end you a good day, sometimes lives. I tell you plainly tonight, this is not a matter of if another collision will happen, but rather when. In the morning, the sun sits like a blinding torch in the sky. Drivers turning left from Afton onto Victory will face a wall of light. And beyond that wall of light, unseen cars barreling westward. The turn is a gamble. It is a blind leap, and we have asked citizens to make that leap for a long time. While not all of these crashes will make the local news, the people know, my neighbors know, and have seen the flashing lights. We have heard the emergency sirens and have wondered many more times how much more suffering will happen before action is taken. In support of my claims tonight, it is my intention to form, file a formal Freedom of Information Act request to the Portsmouth Police Department seeking crash data reports from 2018 to the present at this very intersection. With this empirical data as proof, I hope to prove the danger of this intersection beyond just my spoken word. But I ask you now tonight, do we need more data to do what is right? A traffic light here would not be a luxury. It would be a line drawn in defense of life. A simple measure proven in other neighborhoods that slows the reckless and shields the cautious. I ask not tonight for a favor, I ask tonight for safety. Council members, if any among you desire further details, witness accounts, the results of my Freedom of Information Act contents, or the voice of those who drive that road daily, I welcome your inquiry, your counsel, and your partnership in this cause. But I beseech you tonight, let us not wait until we must bow our heads in mourning where today we might act in prevention. Let no one here say that they did not know the danger requested here. The danger has been named. The solution, I believe, is clear. Now we must act. In closing, in some humor, but in all seriousness, in words similar to another Virginian, I say in closing, I know not what course others may take, but as for me, give me a traffic light or give me death. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Ms. Sheila Joseph. Ms. Joseph, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
139 Grand Street, Portsmouth, Virginia. Before I get started on what I was planning to speak on, Mr. Carter answered a lot of information about what I was going to be asking concerning the water bill because they haven't timeframes that they still working on it. But at the same time, I want to suggest something he already said. And I wrote to him and asked him to send everybody a copy so you could see what I'm talking about. And the history of our bill from the old billing system been like this for a long time. And I'm glad we getting a new billing system. But on my bill that I received yesterday, when I went and paid the bill for the month of May to June that was due on the 7th. Normally, I would pay it advanced, but I was trying to wait for the new bill with the new number for I paid. But it worked out when I came here to see that I have it. I didn't have it. So I said, I'll wait until the weekend, like they told me last week. And that didn't happen. So when I went back home from coming here yesterday in the morning, I found out a bill came for the month of billing period with the new account, which I didn't get yet with the new account, but it's a new bill from dating from May to 6, 5, 6 to 6, 1, and due for 7 of July. Now, that bill that came in, that they sent me showed up yesterday saying 6, 1 to 7, 1, July, July the 31st, which is, I counted on my calendar, 24 days. So we want to understand, when it's 30 days, month to month, and it's 24, I'm trying to understand how that new system would be billing us for 24 days in July the 31st out of the, from June to May. I noticed on that bill, previous bill, it says 5 to 6, July due. Well, this time, from 6 to 7, July due the 31st. I'm trying. I'm trying to understand that. Maybe, Mr. Carter, you can get with me or somebody to explain so I can have some clarity on that. And when I learn about the $10 for the meter and all along that we were paying for water use, like the previous bill, say, $20.88. Well, I'm just finding out yesterday, when the new bill that I pay, it'll be taken out of the water bill to use for the meter so that people will understand that. Some haven't got that understanding, but I explained to them that what's going to be happening for every month, $10 for the use of the meter. What happened in the past of the previous bills that we were getting, we were actually paying, we thought, for water use. We didn't know that we were paying for water and the meter itself included. So we need to understand how much we really need to know how much water we were really using. You know, since they had both of them compiled together and want explanatory and detail. And I wrote to you the letter about being detailed and you reassure us that everything will be detailed in our water bill now. So I thank you and your staff for that. And City Council, I need for everybody to pray for me because I'm working on different projects in this city to make things better. And we have to listen to each other and learn from each other. And some people love to complain about things, but they don't like to put it in writing. I just want to say, Mr. Carter, I appreciate the hard work that you're doing. But if you can answer and be patient with me to get some answer of those bills that you asked me about. But I decided to ask you all to get an audit to do it.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our speakers for this evening. And it ends our meeting. If there's no other business to conduct, then this meeting is adjourned. Have a safe...